Colleagues, I appreciate you allowing us to wait. We have the New Year's Honours list honorees are making their way down a crowded elevator system, so I do not want to get started until they and their families have got settled, since that's right off the top, so just be another minute or so. Please be seated. Okay, colleagues, welcome to the fourth meeting of City Council. I'm going to start by doing a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodinoshone, Lennepeewak, and Atawandron people. We honor and respect the history, language, and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampum Bell Treaty of the Hodinoshone Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Hodinoshone-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKay Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and the Hodinoshone. Three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Munsee Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. I just want to add for those participating too, that the City of London is committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. In a moment, I'm going to invite up Emmanuel Afsa. Credited as Emmanuel is a Canadian rhythm and blues singer whose debut EP, Alt Therapy Session One: Delusion, was a Juno nominee for Traditional R&B Soul Recording of the Year at the Juno Awards of 2021. Afsa was born and raised in London, Ontario, and is the son of the parents from Ethiopia who came to Canada as refugees in the 1970s. At this time, please let us welcome Emmanuel for the singing of our national anthem, and please rise.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of our command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, our true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[1456.00][1456.00](Applause)
Colleagues, before we turn to recognitions, I'll look for any disclosures of community interest for today's agenda. Okay, seeing none, we have a few recognitions before we move into the Mayor's New Year's Honors List recognitions. To start, I'd like to call on councillor Ramon.
Thank you, your worship. Salam alaikum. January 29th marks the National Day of Remembrance of the Quebec City mosque attack and action against Islamophobia. This date marks a deep wound in our collective national memory. On that fateful day six years ago, we witnessed a loss of life and utter despair when six worshippers were killed and others seriously injured at the Islamic Centre of Quebec City. Today, we continue to honor the memory of those who lost their lives for simply praying, for simply being Muslim. We also honor those who have been and continue to be traumatized and deeply hurt by the consequences of Islamophobia. The six men who died in the Quebec City mosque attack were Ibrahim Aberry, Mamadou Tanou Barry, Khalid Balakemi, Abu Bakr Tafti, Abdelkrim Hasani, Azadiyan Soufani. The Green Square campaign takes place in the weeks leading up to January 29th every year to remember the victims and survivors of the Quebec City mosque attack. The green square represents the beautiful green carpets of the Quebec City mosque where the victims stood to pray. It symbolizes the fact that the deceased are in a green garden in a better place since they left us that night. This week, we wear a green square that represents our continued fight against Islamophobia and all forms of hate, in solidarity with our Muslim brothers and sisters in Quebec City, in London, Ontario, and across Canada. Thank you.
Councillor Prible.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to acknowledge that this past Sunday was a celebration of a new lunar year, and we would like to wish our entire community who is celebrating this holiday all the best throughout this year of Rabid. I would like to also acknowledge the incident that happened in Monterey Park in California, and our prayers, thoughts, and love goes to all the families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and back to councillor Ramon.
Thank you, your worship. I rise today on behalf of the Tamil community who is celebrating Tamil heritage celebration. I would like to thank you for your support and your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission. I would like to thank you for your commitment to the mission.
I rise today on behalf of the Tamil community, who is celebrating Tamil Heritage Month and the month of January. It is also the time that Tamils in India and Sri Lanka gather to celebrate the Harvest Festival known as Pongal. Happy Pongal to the Tamil community that is celebrating. They had a beautiful celebration this weekend, and I was honored to be able to attend with councillor Prible. Thank you.
Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, your worship. On behalf of London City Council and my colleagues on the London Police Services Board, it is my honor to recognize Sergeant Lewis Bud Corey, who passed away recently on January the 12th at the age of 97. Aside from being a devoted husband, a loving father, and grandfather, he was also a trailblazer. Detective Sergeant Corey was the first Black officer hired by the London Police Services in 1951. His work with LPS was inspirational and transformational. During a career that spanned 30 years, he served in various roles with the London Police and the London Police Association, eventually retiring as a detective in the fraud unit. His legacy lives on through the Lewis Corey Award for Youth, which recognizes trailblazers in our community, trailblazers like Sergeant Corey. We offer our condolences to his family, loved ones, and friends, and we give thanks for Sergeant Corey's service.
Thank you, councillor. I have a recognition. Since last we met as a council, two former members of this chamber have passed away: Orlando Zampronia on December 13th, 2022, and Betty Howard on January 2nd, 2023. Betty Howard was wife of the late Bob Howard. She served on council from 1994 to 1997. Orlando Zapronia, or Oz, as he was known by many, served a total of 24 years as a councillor, comptroller, and deputy mayor. And as is tradition at this council, when former members of this chamber pass, we honor them with a moment of silence. So I'd ask you to rise and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Be seated. I'm going to move to the podium for the next set of recognitions. All right, we got this one on? Perfect. So it's time that we recognize those Londoners who received the distinction of being on the Mayor's New Year's Honors List for this year. I'll mention that although it's called the Mayor's New Year's Honors List, it is a process that provides input and feedback from our advisory committees, and ultimately, all members of council make the final decision on who will be honored on this list. And we have, I believe, 14 honorees today. Given we have 14 honorees and we have 14 members of council, although I know a few are remote, I thought it would be nice to share in the recognition of these distinguished Londoners by inviting, and I will go around the horseshoe, by inviting a member of council up with me to do the recognition as well as present the certificate to them. Let me say generally, though, to all of the honorees, we appreciate so much your service to our community. You have contributed in many different ways, and I hope in the reception that we just had upstairs, you were able to meet each other, learn from each other, and talk about the wonderful ways that you've contributed to our community. Everybody is only given so much time in life, and you've chosen to give some of yours in serving our community in a way that deserves to be recognized today. So I'm very honored to invite you today to be part of the ceremony. I hope you carry this forward into our community as those who are leaders, those who have contributed, those who inspire others to do great things. I know your families, and many family members and loved ones are here today to join in the celebration. Of course, you're all welcome to stay for the whole afternoon to watch the council meeting, but in case you don't want to do that, we recognize that you'll probably be leaving shortly after this. But for those who I got to meet, and those who members of council got to meet today, the families of the loved ones, thank you so much for supporting those who we're honoring today. I know anybody who tries to accomplish something in life, in leadership, and representing their community is always supported by a number of loved ones. So as we honor your loved ones today, we're also honoring your contributions and support to them for all that they do. So thank you very much. It was wonderful to get to know a number of you. And so with that, I'm going to invite up councillor McAllister to come up and say some words about our first honoree. And colleagues, it's all written down for you. We've got some notes up here. Just don't mix up the order on me, so.
Okay. As I go through this, I invite the recipient to come out. This is for accessibility. Ashton Forrest is a master's candidate in the Department of Philosophy at Western University, where her areas of scholarly focus are justice and human rights as they pertain to moral, legal, and political philosophy. As a person with debilitating chronic condition called, pardon if I say this wrong, scleroderma? She has spent over a decade advocating for and raising awareness about accessibility and disability issues on the local, provincial, and national stage. She has served on the City of London's Accessibility Advisory Committee, Cheshire London's Community Cultural Competency Committee, and was the former student accessibility consultant with the Academic Support and Engagement Office at Western. As a current member of the Post-Secondary Education Standards Committee for Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, AODA, she is working with other accessibility experts and advocates to create an accessible education standard for the AODA. Ashton lives by the phrase "nothing about us without us." Because of all the positive impact Ashton has made in our community, she's on this year's 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of accessibility. Congratulations.
Next, I'll invite up Deputy Mayor Lewis to do the next recognition.
Thank you, your worship, and I'd like to invite Sydney Vickers to join us up here. She is one of this year's distinguished Londoner category recipients. I feel like I could talk about Sydney without even looking at the notes. We've known each other for a little while now, but if I do that, I might miss something important. So I'm going to refer to the notes because she's got an incredible resume as an 18-year-old Londoner and resident of Ward 2, who has already become an incredible role model and community leader. At a young age, she set up tables at her school fund fairs to raise money for Plan Canada, collected donations for the Humane Society, and volunteered at the Food Bank. In grade seven, Sydney became the founder of Hope's Hugs, a charitable organization that she has started, that she and her amazing volunteers make and deliver hug blankets to those who have experienced tragedy in their lives, to those who are in hospice care or in palliative care. Sydney has made and delivered more than 2,000 hug blankets for free, and they have been shipped literally from coast to coast to coast in this country. Some recipients of these have included the Humboldt Broncos hockey team out in the Prairies and right here, our own London Muslim mosque for those impacted by the Afsa family tragedy. She's also been a volunteer at hospitality dinners for the past seven years. She's a circle leader for Vaughan Kids Bereavement Program and a volunteer at the London Food Bank. She's also done mission trips and a lot more. She represents our future. She represents the best of our youth in this community. And so for that reason, those reasons, and so many more, I am proud to recognize on the Mayor's New Year's Honors List Sydney Vickers in the category of distinguished Londoner.
Next, I'd like to invite up councillor Cuddy.
Bev, would you please come forward? Thanks, Bev. Bev Farrell is a therapeutic recreation specialist who's recently retired from Third Age Outreach, St. Joseph's Healthcare, SJHC London. In her work with Third Age Outreach and her volunteer work in the community, Bev has been a passionate advocate for older adults and persons with disabilities, and is someone who brings joy, compassion, and connection to everyone, everything she does. In her contributions to the Age Friendly London Network, Bev has been instrumental in the creation of many successful programs that have improved access to social activities and recreation for older adults. She's also played a large role in planning the annual Age Friendly London Conference. Bev has also been the lead and founding member of the Lean on Me Volunteer Training Program that provides enhanced volunteer support to the frailer senior to promote active community engagement. It is for all these reasons and for so many more that Bev is this year's recipient on the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of age friendly. Bev, thank you very much for your contribution.
I can't help but think, Bev, that the mayor chose this specifically because I'm closing in on my 65th birthday. So there's something about this that I might probably have to get in touch with you. So, thank you.
It's the only time you get to speak twice today. Next, I'd like to invite up councillor Stevenson.
It's my pleasure to welcome Karen Schindler. Over the past 20 years, Karen Schindler has made substantial contributions to the vitality of the literary arts in London, Ontario. Karen is the former director of Poetry London, now Antler River Poetry, an expertly-run poetry reading series highly esteemed by the country's leading poets, largely because of Karen's efforts. She is the founder and publisher of Baseline Press, a consistently VP Nickel Award-winning poetry chapbook press of incomparable quality and reputation, and is also a tirelessly engaged mentor and exemplar of community building in the arts in London, Ontario. Through baseline launches and Poetry London-related activities, she has engaged a variety of organizations throughout the city, including Words Festival, Brown and Dixon Bookshop, DNA Gallery, and Tap Centre for Creativity. Karen continues to actively advocate on behalf of London's art sector. For these reasons and more, Karen is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honor List in the category of arts. Thank you, Karen.
Next, I'd like to invite up councillor Prible.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is truly my great pleasure to invite here Christina, who is here. Please join us, Christina. She is here on behalf of actually Carl, who is the recipient, and I would like to mention a few words about Carl. Thank you very much. For the past 12 years, Carl Cadogan has been chair and treasurer of the London Black History Coordinating Committee, founded in 2002. The LBHCC seeks to engage the community in celebrating Black History Month through organizing, supporting, and collaborating with community organizations on programs and activities that are available to the region to educate, inform, and uplift. Carl's leadership has enabled the LBHCC to mount an impressive celebration of Black History Month each February. Carl has encouraged his colleagues on the committee to forge relationships with members of London's diverse Black population and with local organizations that serve and reflect that population. The result has been partnerships that support LBHCC goals and programs. Black History Month in London is now a major event in the city's cultural calendar and has become a positive force in the larger southwestern Ontario region and beyond. Carl Cadogan's fellow committee members value the leadership and networking talents he brings to their organization. For all these reasons and many more, Carl Cadogan is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of diversity and race relations. Please thank Carl for, on our all behalf, and thank you very much for everything he has been doing for our community. Thank you.
Carl's in a place with very nice weather, so we're all a little jealous. I'll now invite up councillor Trosau.
I'd like to begin by inviting Ted Medzin to come up. One of our selections for this honor, selected by the mayor and council in the distinguished Londoner category, is Edward Ted, as he's known by his friends, Medzin. He's a former faculty member at Western, where he was known as a fine teacher and a dedicated researcher, and also as a supportive colleague. His academic work spanned through the faculties of science and medicine, and he served his time as president of the Faculty Association. Ted thrived in his research field. He served the term as president of the Canadian Association of Microbiologists, '89 to '90, and he was very active for many years in the London High School Science Fair as well. He served as president of the organizing group and is still active on their board of the organization. Ted was a prime mover in bringing the National Science Fair to London in 2000. He's also a lover of music. In 2017, he was a principal organizer of Bands 150, a musical extravaganza. He's also a dedicated supporter of the London Symphonia, and in 2022 helped the group bring the distinguished Canadian pianist Stuart Goodyear to London. In a lifetime of achievement in public service, he has also served on the boards of London Better Business Bureau and the London Jewish Community Foundation. He likewise remains active in the London and District Myaloma Support Group. For these reasons and so many more, Ted is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner.
Next, I'd like to invite up councillor Ramon.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Nawaz.
So I have the distinct honour of presenting Nawaz Tahir with the humanitarianism recognition today. This year's recipient, Nawaz Tahir, is the Chair of HICMA Public Affairs Council, which was started with the goal of increasing the political participation of Muslims in the London area. Nawaz has served as a Director of the Board for St Joe's Healthcare in London. In June 2021, he was appointed the Board's first Vice Chair. In 2012, he founded and co-chaired an international conference at Western University on Islam and Democracy. He is the co-editor of the book Religion and Representation: Islam and Democracy, Cambridge, 2015. Aside from his significant commitment to community service and volunteerism, Nawaz also excels as a lawyer. He serves as the managing partner of the London Office of McCaggy Borlach LLP, where he practises in the area of insurance, professional malpractice and class action defence litigation. Nawaz is also a past adjunct professor at Western's Law School, where he taught civil procedure. For all his dedication to volunteerism and community work and more, Nawaz is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of humanitarianism.
Next, I'd like to invite up councillor Lehman.
A distinguished Londoner, outstanding contribution to community collaboration, or acts of goodwill by giving back to our city selected by mayor and council. Jason Rip is one of our distinguished Londoners this year. Jason has been active in the London arts community for over 25 years as a playwright, actor, director and theatre producer. He was a recipient of the 2018 Chris Doughty Award for Lifetime Achievement in Theatre. He has written over 25 plays about London for organisations such as Fancher Pioneer Village, Elsie Perrin Williams Estate, Elden House, Doors Open London, Woolsey Barracks, Grosvenor Lodge, Museum London, Original Kids Theatre and Top Centre for Creativity. Jason's work, when not based on local history or historical biography, tends to be issue-based and has raised funds for charitable organisations he supports. Jason was a programme coordinator for Theatre Works, a Y O U cosponsored theatre programme for at-risk youth, which ran for three years. And for the last seven years, he has been a frontline support worker for the Unity Project of Relief of Homelessness. For these reasons and many more, it is my honour to see Jason Rip named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of distinguished Londoner. Congratulations, Jason.
I'd like to invite Padre Frank Mance. Frank's service to veterans, their families and the communities is unmatched. As padre to the Byron Springbank Legion Branch 533, he has the important role of sitting with our veterans as they approach their final days and helping them find peace. He has performed the funeral service for countless friends, veterans and Canadian heroes. His services are filled with credit and recognition and personalised stories about each veteran. It is the care that he takes in preparing for the services that makes them so meaningful to the families. For a veteran in need, Frank will always go to the extra mile to help. Frank is also one of the stewards of the Lutheran Social Services Fund. Through this fund, charitable organisations in the London community can receive financial assistance to help with services for children, youth, aged and ill and challenged persons. For his selfless commitment to helping others, Padre Frank Mance is named a distinguished Londoner for the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list. Congratulations.
That's where I ask my staff if I'm going to mess something up by skipping someone who's not here. So I'd like to invite councillor Franks. See, I don't know why I bother, because everybody else has it better organised than I do. Come on up, thank you.
I'd like to invite John up, John Manus. Thank you. Come on up, stand beside the mayor. I'd like to recognise John. John Manus has been a strength and stay within the heritage sector of the City of London for well over 20 years. John joined the Board of Heritage London Foundation, H L F, in 2005, where he is a valuable member of the team that developed the strategic plan in 2005 to 2008, and he served as Vice Chair and then Chair of the organisation. While with H L F, John joined the inaugural H L F ACO London Heritage Awards Committee in 2007, and the whole awards programme would not have been a success without John's willingness to undertake many tasks that have to be done each year. In fact, it could not have been managed in the early days without his gifts of time, insight, attention to detail and expertise in several areas. From taking the photographs to preparing the booklets and managing, and then eventually overseeing the AV presentations, John's involvement with the running of the ceremony each year until 2021 was massive. John was also a founding member of the LHC Board and served on it for many years. For these reasons and more, John is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of heritage. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome to start a row on this side if you'd like, John. There's going to be 14 of you. Do you want to start a row on this side? We're going to have everybody come back up at the end for one picture, so. Okay. See, again, I'm trying to organise something that's already organised. I'd like to invite up councillor and Budget Chair Palozza to the stage.
This award is for the environment, contributions to the awareness, preservation, protection of the environment. Tom Call, please join us. Tom is a professor, environmental leader and community organiser with over 10 years of experience working with people and organisations in London and the surrounding region to promote the ecological health of the Thames River, being the deschconduing watershed. He founded and acts as the Director of Antler River Rally. Antler River Rally represents 11 years of direct environmental action that can be measured in not only hundreds of tonnes of garbage removed from the river, but the fostering of direct action, citizen stewardship and the building of a community of care and respect around the river. Tom was also London's laureate from 2016 to 2018, where he focused his work on ecological thinking, including River of Words, a multi-poet event which examined our relationship to deschconduing, the Thames River and the River Talks, a three-day community event dedicated to reimagining, renewing, restoring and respecting our waterways. Tom has always forged relationships with First Nations artists, activists and communities. He does so to educate people about the interesting social and environmental issues that coalesce around the river. For those reasons and so many more, Tom is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of environment. Tom would also have you know that there's an active Facebook group where you could follow the group as they were resuming collection of the garbage in the spring, and please come out and join us. And please join me in congratulating Mr Tom Call.
Get to do two. Come on back up.
Charlene would like to come up, please. And this is the category of distinguished Londoner. Charlene has devoted incredible dedication to fighting to protect children from internet predators through awareness and education. She is the author of Digital Sexual Victims: True Cases, and more recently she filmed and produced the documentary Vulnerable Innocence in her basement. In 2022, this important documentary was screened at film festivals around the world and is the winner of 22 international awards. The proceeds from this hit documentary are used for therapy for victims of internet child exploitation. Charlene travels globally as a keynote speaker, shining a light not only on the problem but also providing solutions to this very concerning and global epidemic. Charlene is the winner of the 2018 International Women of Excellence Award. She is a change maker in the London community and the global community. For her incredible passion for protecting youth around the world, Charlene is named distinguished Londoner for the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list. Congratulations.
Deputy Mayor Lewis, you can come back up, please. Well, normally the councillors only get to speak once at council, so this is a nice surprise. I think the mayor planned it this way so he can do the last one himself. But I know he told you that you were welcome to stay for council after the meeting. He also blamed me for being the reason that we were here till 11:45 last night, so I'm not sure how many times he's going to invite me back up to the mic, so I'm going to take this opportunity to invite Joel Cardelo to join us up here. Joel Cardelo is a great humanitarian who gives selflessly and receives joy by giving to others. From his business to his church to his charitable commitments, he leads by example. If we all have gifts of time, talent and treasure, Joe shares in all of those gifts and shares them with our community at the highest level. He dedicates his time to coordinating the Roman Roadhouse monthly speakers' schedule in Byron, ensuring residents have the opportunity to listen to a variety of speakers. As the Chair of the Basket Brigade, Joe started a local chapter in the fora city 13 years ago. The Basket Brigade London has helped to support over 950 families at Christmas time with bountiful baskets of food, Christmas dinner, gifts, and partnering with the Janson family toy drive has allowed the Basket Brigade to provide toys for some families with children. So for those reasons and many more, Joel Cardelo is named to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of distinguished Londoner. And there's one more left, and I will do the last one. I'd like to invite Rup Chanderat up. This is the category of sports. Rup started as a player with the London Majors Baseball Club in 1998. He played outfield for the team, playing 106 games over seven seasons. He went on to become co-owner of the team with Scott Dart in 2005 and took on the role of general manager and field manager in 2006. Over the next 17 seasons, Rup has accomplished much with the London Majors and the City of London. Under Rup's leadership, the Majors have won the pennant, finishing season play in first place, the Inter County Baseball League four times, 2008, 2016, 2021 and 2022. Played in the league finals six times, 2004, 2006, 2008, 2015, 2021 and 2022, and won the IBL Championship two times, back-to-back, in 2021 and 2022. Rup was voted the first All-Star Manager and Manager of the Year in 2016 and 2021, and the second team All-Star Manager in 2008 and 2022. Rup has over 300 wins in the Inter County Baseball League, is one of the most respected general manager over his 17 seasons with the Majors. For all these reasons and more, and I do want to add one more, Rup is named to the Mayor's New Year's Honour list in the category of sports. Perhaps his greatest accomplishment is, in the year where we had to play an exhibition game to keep the continuous, longest continuous baseball diamond alive at Lebat Park, he coached me in throwing out the first pitch and I threw it over the plate, which is quite the accomplishment. So, so thank you for all that you've done for our community, not just in the field of sports, but of course as a mentor to so many young people and all the other activities you do. Congratulations, Rup. And again, let me make a general congratulations to all of the inductees, all for different reasons, all for the same spirit and contribution and dedication to the City of London. You honour us by being here today. Thank you to the families who came out for the ceremony. As we conclude, I'd like to invite everybody back up, and we'll do one quick group photo together, and then we'll set you on your way, unless of course you want to engage in a council meeting for the rest of the afternoon. So come on back up to the front. Okay, colleagues, thank you for helping support that really important recognition today. I appreciate all of your involvement. Next, we're on to item three of the Next, we're on to item three of the agenda, which is a review of confidential matters to be considered in public. There are none. That moves us to our Council in Closed Session component. There are three items for Closed Session on the regular agenda. I'll look for a motion to move into Closed Session for those reasons. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. I don't see any discussion, so we'll open that vote in the system.
Counselor Hopkins?
I vote yes.
And Counselor Van Mirbergen? Once more for Counselor Van Mirbergen. Marking Van Mirbergen absent, closing the vote. Motion carries, 14 to zero.
So we'll just be a moment to transition into in-camera.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're back in public session. We're on to confirmation and signing of the previous minutes. These are the minutes for the meeting, the third meeting, which was held on December 13th, 2022. I need a mover and a seconder for confirmation of the minutes. Counselor Cady, seconded by Counselor Pribble. Any discussion on the minutes? No? Okay, we will do that in the system.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Next communication petitions on your added agenda, there's a communication from Deputy Mayor Lewis and Counselor Roman related to the item seven of the second report of Civic Works Committee. I need a motion to refer that correspondence to that item, which is where it will be dealt with. Counselor Trosaw, seconded by Counselor Roman. Any discussion? Okay, we'll open that in the system for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
So there's no motions, which notices give. We are on to reports. The first report we have is the second report of the Corporate Services Committee, so I'll hand it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. It was a relatively quick Corporate Services meeting. Everything was passed by the committee without a lot of debate, and I will look to see if anyone wishes anything pulled to be dealt with separately. I was not made aware of anything ahead of the meeting.
Anybody want any items dealt with separately? Okay, looks like you're clear to make a motion.
Then I will put the entirety of the second report of the Corporate Services Committee on the floor.
Okay, any comments or discussion on the entire report of Corporate Services Committee? All right, seeing none, we'll open that for voting in the system.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Eight point two is the second report of the Community and Protective Services Committee, Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have not been given notice to pull anything separate.
Would anybody like anything on this report dealt with separately? Okay, should be good to make a motion.
Okay, I will put all the items one through nine on the floor. Everything was a unanimous vote at committee. Some good things here on the roadmap to 3,000 affordable housing and contribution agreements. I will also note that the Green Space Alliance, there is a motion in here to receive their correspondence, and A. Johnson was unable to attend, and Mary Ann Hodge presented on their behalf. Thank you.
Comments or questions on the full report? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting on screen.
Counselor Pribble? Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, item eight point three, which is the second report of the Civic Works Committee, Counselor Roman.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. I would like to put the second report of the Civic Works Committee on the floor. We had great conversation about the East London Link, the contract procured in place pipe sewer lining, as well as the Blue Box transition and next steps, as well as our Neighborhood Connectivity Plan, which we will continue that conversation later this month as well. So I'll look to put that on the floor, including the communication received by Deputy Mayor Lewis and myself.
I'm just wondering, were you looking to take an action today on that item? Because if you were, that should be pulled separately.
Thank you, I'll pull that separate, thank you.
Okay, so we'll do a motion on one through six, unless someone else would like something pulled separate. So we're already dealing with seven separately, but the balance can be dealt together. Okay, it looks like you're good to make a motion on the balance.
Thank you, I'll make that motion.
Any discussion on items one through six? All right, seeing none, we'll open that for voting on screen.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, I'll let you deal with seven now.
Thank you, and through you, I'll look to put the correspondence that was included as an added from Deputy Mayor Lewis and myself. It is the result of conversations at advisory committees around being able to be more flexible with the way that they're meeting. So right now, advisory committees have requested to be able to continue to have, or sorry, I should say, have a hybrid meeting, where they have the opportunity to meet either in person and then also make that opportunity available still to continue online. And so that letter is provided.
Okay, so from my understanding, you've put the committee's recommendation on the floor, and now either you or the Deputy Mayor are going to make a motion to refer it as per your correspondence, so I'll go to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and yes, I'm going to now put a referral on the floor for this item to be forwarded to the next regular, granted that we have two budget SPPCs, so the next regular meeting of SPPC. And I'll look for a seconder for that, and then I'll provide some rationale, so.
Sure, so referral takes precedent. It's moved, Counselor Roman can second it, despite, even though she's presenting the report, so that's no problem, so it's moved and seconded, so go ahead.
Great, I will try and be fairly succinct and brief on this. We heard at Planning and Environment Committee on the Monday night, and then Civic Works heard it on the Tuesday, concerns from a couple of advisory committees about their desire to begin meeting or having the opportunity to meet in person or hybrid meetings. Both committees recognized that that was important. However, no one standing committee can direct a direction for all of our advisory committees. That has to be a decision that we make through the SPPC meetings. And while we've heard from some advisory committees, by putting this on the agenda for the next SPPC, it also gives time for the advisory committees that we have not yet heard from to reach out and share any concerns or communications that they may have for us in regard to this item. So I am hoping that colleagues will support the referral. And as indicated in the communication to colleagues, Counselor Roman and I have already drafted a motion that we will bring to SPPC in support of that, to create a framework for the discussion to move around when that time comes, so thank you for that.
Okay, so that's, you moved a motion, so that's good. Other discussion? Did you want to speak now? Okay, Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, I would like to thank Counselor Roman and Deputy Mayor Lewis for bringing this forward. It is really important. I've heard from a number of committee members, the need to at least have an opportunity of getting together. I wonder, through you, Your Worship, maybe to staff, if we can have an idea of which SPPC meeting it's going to. As I'm quickly going through my calendar, we have a number of full agendas when it comes to our strategic plan, our budget, just in case anyone is listening in and may want to know when they can expect this coming, to which meeting. I think we're well into March here. Thank you.
So the next regular meeting that it could be at is the seventh, so it could be turned around fairly quickly. It's not a complex direction, but obviously there may be some discussion and debate and feedback from staff on it, so that can happen at the seventh. Okay, so moved, seconded, and we were having discussion, any other discussion or debate on this? Okay, so this is on the referral, which will take care of the item and will be dealt with at the SPPC meeting in the future. We're going to open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
I believe that takes care of your report. Perfect, thank you. Okay, next we have item eight point four, which is the fourth report of SPPC. I'll have Deputy Mayor Lewis present this one.
Thank you, Your Worship. We've got a number of SPPC reports to get through at this council meeting. This is the fourth report. This has the semi-annual progress report that we've received, the strategic plan, approach, direction, setting context that we received as well. And of course, these items were all passed, so not been made aware of anything to be pulled separately, so I'm prepared to put the whole report on the floor.
Okay, does anyone want anything on this report dealt with separately? Okay, so you're making a motion on the full report. So this is the full report of the fourth report, or the full fourth report of SPPC. Any discussion? No? Okay, that'll open on screen.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
How about the fifth report?
Thank you, Your Worship. I feel like I may be standing for a while. Happy to put the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee on the floor as well. This is a short agenda item that we'd be ratifying. It's just the declaration of pecuniary interest and the first step in the development of the 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, the vision, mission, values, strategic areas, focus, and outcomes, which is actually a process that we finished last night, but we began a while back now.
So the whole report's on the floor, any discussion or comments? Okay, we'll open that on screen.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Well, for the hat trick and do the third SPPC report tonight.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I appreciate the hockey reference. I'm pleased to put the sixth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee on the floor. I'll just remind colleagues that this included the first report of DIAC, as well as our first 2023 budget PPM, and the delegation for Mr. Rayburn on behalf of Middlesex County, and Neil Roberts, the chief of our Middlesex London Paramedic Service. There are also a number of appointments on there to our conservation authorities, to the Old East Village BIA, and the declaration of a vacancy on the Committee of Adjustment, just to refresh folks' memory on what's on this particular SPPC agenda.
And before we proceed with the whole agenda, Counselor Trosaw is going to make some comments, and if you stand, Counselor, you can speak.
I'm doing, I'm going to declare a conflict on the matter of the appointment to number, well, the lower Thames. Four point three.
Yes, in the agenda, Counselor Trosaw declared a pecuniary interest on item four point three, which were appointments to the Lower Thames Conservation Authority, indicating one of the candidates is his spouse. So if we could deal with that separately. Does anybody want anything else dealt with separately? If not, I'll let you do the motion in whatever order you want.
Well, what I'm going to do is, first, I will put everything on the agenda, with the exception of, this is item eight, four point three, from the committee agenda, the consideration of the appointment to the Lower Thames Valley Conservation Authority, and then we'll deal with that item afterward.
Okay, so this is everything with the exception of the item that Counselor Trosaw declared on? Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
And I will now put item eight, eight, consideration of appointment to the Lower Thames Valley Conservation Authority, on the floor.
Okay, that is on the floor for consideration. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
And that completes the sixth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
Okay, thank you. On to eight point seven, which is the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I will turn it over to Counselor Lehman. And Counselor Lehman, I indicated to you that there's an amendment sheet related to item sixteen, or three point seven.
Thank you, Your Worship, so I'll be pulling that. I have had no other requests for any other items to be pulled.
Would anybody like anything on the planning committee agenda to be dealt with separately other than item sixteen? No? You can go ahead and make a motion then, Counselor.
Thank you. It was a fairly straightforward meeting. Staff recommendations were supported on all. Just like to highlight two things. Six thirty-four Commissioners Road West, it was an interesting development that involved heritage property, and I'd like to just, a commendation to the applicant for stick handling that, it's always tricky when you're handling heritage properties, as well as including the community in bringing the application forward. And on 400 South Door Road East, another unusual thing in that the applicant has proposed to transfer ownership of four units to the city. So, you know, now that bonusing is no longer permitted by the province, I think there's going to be unique applications, and I encourage developers to recognize that the city's quest for affordable units in town, and this is an example of some original thought and my appreciation there. I have to, I need to read out a little bit of a preamble before I put items on the floor as per our legal department. So I'm going to put items, all items except number sixteen, on the floor. It being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the Planner on File, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to the Municipal Council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been on balance, taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these manners. So I'll put those items on the floor.
Okay, so that's everything on the planning committee agenda, with the exception of item sixteen. Any discussion? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, for recognizing me. I would like to speak to number eleven, three point two, six thirty-four, Commissioners Road West. I found myself in a bit of a dilemma at planning committee, and I'd just like to make a couple comments. I did bring forward a friendly amendment to see if we could have a better look at preserving the trees, and it was not supported. But I find myself in this dilemma, as we support intensification, how do we balance that out with the protection of our trees? I think we are faced with a number of challenges based on the province making these changes, and I just want us as a council to be aware of this application going forward. And there is a tree preservation plan on the property. There are 28 trees on the property. Twenty-five of them are going to be removed. There will only be three. It's a huge canopy there. And when we look into it now, how we balance the intensification of this and to make it viable, there's really nothing that we can do now with these changes coming down, other than, and you can see in the recommendation, the applicant is going to do their best to preserve as many trees, but the reality is that only three are going to be left. I just want to, just really encourage the applicant to try to preserve as many as possible. There's really not even a tree plan or replacement plan on the property. They're not there yet, so we don't even know what the replacements are going to look like. And I have learned from developments around me that when you do plant trees, it can take a long, long time for that tree to grow without the proper protection of soil and the work that's needed to get things going. So I want to thank the applicant, preserving this heritage building is great, to see that happen. I know the community that came out was pleased that it's two, three-story townhouse units, so it's taking into account that heritage building that sits in the middle. But the reality is, if you take a peek at our canopy, our tree canopy, it is going to be drastically changed in this neighborhood, as this neighborhood deals with a number of other infills that are coming forward. And again, I want to just again encourage the applicant to protect and save as many trees as possible. I know it's just words, but it's really something that I feel very strongly about, how we do balance our intensification projects during this time of changes, that we have very little we can do to protect the trees. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any of the matters before us, which is everything except item sixteen? Counselor Trosaw.
I'm just, thank you, through the chair, I'm just wondering why the idea of looking at the tree preservation plan further, which possibly could have, could somebody explain why that was not approved? Because otherwise, everything was unanimous.
I'll go to the chair, and then you can refer to staff if you need to.
Thank you. Staff did, that was asked at committee, but I will refer to Mr. Maythers to review that for the council.
Mr. Maythers.
Through your worship, Heather McNeely is on the line, so she'll be able to provide your response. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Our tree preservation plans are typically looked at at preliminary level from a zoning perspective, just to create that zoning box, and this is not in a tree protection area under the bylaw, so these would typically be reviewed as part of any normal development application, and then the fine detail is looked at through this site plan process. So over and above, we would identify the trees that are going to be removed, and typically with these type of infill intensification projects, it's the perimeter trees that we try to protect at the end of the day, and that's pretty much what the standard tree preservation plans identify.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions on, and I'll just remind you, all of the matters are on the floor except for item sixteen from the planning report? No? Okay, then we'll open that in the system for voting.
Counselor Pribble?
Yes?
Use your microphone if you're voting verbally.
Yes.
You had the microphone.
I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. I'll put item sixteen, 942 Westminster Drive, on the floor. It being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the Planner on File, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to the Municipal Council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been on balance, taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these manners.
Okay, so the original's on the floor, but my understanding is you'd like to make an amendment to that as well.
Correct, and I'd like to read out, we have a copy of the amendment, I'd like to read out the rationale. Previously considered bylaw contained errors. The bylaw is amended in Part One by indicating that the zoning is going to an agricultural special provision, AG2 zone, and in Part Two by indicating that the section number is 45.4B.
So this is a technical amendment based on just an error that was noted in the bylaw as a pass committee, so the purpose of this is to correct that, just so colleagues know. This will happen from time to time through the process. So that amendment is moved. I need a seconder because it's an amendment. Counselor Hopkins, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, we're going to open the amendment for voting.
Counselor Van Der Berg, again, thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, so the item is now amended. Counselor Lehman, I assume you're still willing to move the amended item?
That's correct.
Okay, I need a seconder because it's now been amended, so I'll take Counselor Hopkins as the seconder. Any discussion on the now amended motion? Seeing none? Okay, we'll open that in the system.
Closing the vote. Closing the vote, the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, thank you. That completes the reports section of the agenda. However, we have an added report based on our council in closed session. I'll go to Counsel Frank, who will present the item coming out of our closed session.
All right, so from our closed session, Integrated Employment Services Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement.
Yes, you read, just read the top part.
Okay, that on the recommendation of the Deputy City Manager, Social and Health Development, that civic administration be directed to take all necessary actions with respect to delegation of authority to negotiate with His Majesty, the King in Rite of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development, and for the necessary steps to approve and execute an agreement and progress on other matters.
Okay, so that motion requires a seconder. Counsel Palozza, so we have that and progress on other matters before us. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, thank you. We have no deferred matters, inquiries. I don't believe there are any inquiries. Nope. There are no emergent motions, so we are on to bylaws. Okay, so bylaw forty-four is a revised bylaw now. Is it forty-four that's revised? That's the item that Counsel Lehman dealt with in his planning report. We also have an added bylaw, which is Bill forty-five related to the item that just came out of closed session. So that's Bill forty-five, so that means we have Bills twenty-eight through forty-five, noting that forty-four is amended before us. Would anybody like any of those dealt with separately? No? Okay, then we'll do first reading on that entire set of bylaws. I need a mover and a seconder. Counsel Hopkins, seconded by Counsel Frank on first reading. There's no debate on first reading, so we'll move to a vote.
Counsel Trosaw? Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, mover and a seconder for a second reading of Bills number twenty-eight through revised Bill number forty-four and added Bill number forty-five. Moved by Counsel Trosaw, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. Any discussion at second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, third reading of Bill number twenty-eight to revise Bill number forty-four and added Bill number forty-five. Mover and a seconder for third reading. Counsel Palozza, seconded by Counsel Stevenson. There's no discussion on third reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And with that, we have concluded the council agenda. All that remains is an item to move for adjournment. I'd look for a mover. Counsel Frank and a seconder, Counsel McAllister. We'll do that by hand. All those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
We are adjourned.